To do it, so the quorum of the board is present. All the other board members are present, thank you. Is there a motion relative to the agenda for the Select Board meeting?
Almost.
A second. A motion from Tracy and a second from Tim to adopt the agenda as it was posted. Are there any changes to be made to it? If not, all in favor of adopting the agenda as it was posted, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous, excellent. How about approval of the minutes? What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd make a motion to approve both. Both minutes, the board audit and the Select Board minutes.
Great. Is there a second to Mr. Wyman's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Any errors or omissions in the minutes as submitted? If not, all in favor of approval of the minutes as they were prepared and submitted, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. How about Mr. Atherton for the Town Manager's report?
Good evening, everyone. My report for the weeks April 12th and April 19th. As you see, the segment six sidewalk repair replacement started last week on Franklin Street. They're hoping to pour a new sidewalk this week, which is probably going to be tomorrow because it looks like it's going to rain the rest of the week. Highway Department has been working on rebuilding the south entrance to Esterbrook Park to comply with VTRAN standards. We'll also be installing a gate that will remain closed unless there's an event happening at the park. Been working on parks ordinance and have a first draft that I have sent to our attorney for review. Rec Director Bill Moore and Chief Rikel have had input through the process and I'm hoping to have a draft for Select Board review at the next meeting. Lowell Landscaping was awarded the NRCS BioSwell project on Pearl Street and then the Center Street parking lot. They're planning on completing that work in July. That's the bioswells on the side of the road and at the end of the parking area. Attended the Rutland Regional Planning Commission meeting on April 20th. There was discussion on the new three acre stormwater rule, which we're actually already working on up at New England Woodcraft. The guest speaker was Senator Collmore. They've been doing these guest speakers every meeting now. There was talks about how the ARPA funds are going to be distributed, which confirmed that there is no definite plan on how that is going to happen yet. So I don't have much to report on that. I've sent out a press release to local newspapers about the recognition we have received from the USDA on the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, which I have attached to my report for you gentlemen to review. And that's really about it right now.
Great, thank you, Dave. I wanted to thank you for doing that press release. I saw it in the Rutland Herald already, actually, or something derived from it. And I think that that's excellent. Thank you for doing that. Questions for the Town Manager from the board?
Well, I wonder if this, since you just mentioned in your report about the USDA loan and grant, if this is the place to ask about Whisper. Shall I explain that to the people that are new or do you want to take it away, Dave?
You can go ahead if you want, Tim.
Yeah, I'm just, I noticed when I was reading the state revolving loan program that at one point there was a question about whether or not we were going to participate. Is the applicant interested in sponsoring Water Infrastructure Sponsorship Program? And I didn't know what that was. And so I looked it up and come to find out Whisper is a way to get more federal money to do natural resources projects without costing us anything. Because what they do is they expand our loan amount by up to $100,000 and then reduce our cost of the loan. So it ends up, so we're paying the same amount as if we didn't borrow this. And I think the interesting part that I'm really curious to hear, because I guess Dave's looked into this some too, is that when I got online and looked at a little webinar that they did when this, because this was only, this is relatively recent legislation. It came out in 2018 and started in 2019 when it actually was implemented. And apparently, the natural resource projects don't have to be in our community. And in fact, it's even unlikely that they'll be in our community. And the deal is that the Agency of Natural Resources, or one of the alphabet soup organizations in our state, has a list of shovel-ready projects that are looking for matching money. And that any municipality that is doing a sewer project has the ability to then trigger this Whisper sponsorship. And I'm just really curious about it because it seems like low-hanging fruit, another way to get some more money going into, you know, natural resource projects and it wouldn't cost us anything. And I'm curious to know what you found out, Dave?
Pretty much the same thing, but the chances of it happening in our town are pretty slim. And actually, Wayne Elliott's here tonight too, from Alderton Elliott, who I'm sure would love to talk about it.
Yeah, good evening. That's a great question. You're right, I think everything, Lee, I guess everything you're spot on. State started this back in 2018 and what they were trying to do. You're exactly correct that the project may not necessarily be located in the town that's being funded. Typically, they try to do it within a similar watershed. And the objective when they started it was to try to push some money to some of these watershed groups, you know, that really didn't have bonding capacity or anything like that. It's interesting because it's been really underutilized. I can't tell you how many of these applications I've probably done over the last three years. And unfortunately, I don't think I've had anybody really choose to participate. It just, you know, it adds a little more of an administrative burden on the community. And I think, you know, part of that rationale is that, you know, it's, the project isn't necessarily within the town limits. So, you know, that's probably the big question. And I think what they're kind of doing is it's really been running on a pretty limited basis. And I think they're actually talking about potentially phasing it out just because there hasn't been a lot of participation. You know, but ultimately, it's a town decision, you know, that's something you can definitely pursue. But, you know, you've captured the background on it, how it started and, you know, what it can go for very well.
I think the part that was curious to me was, because they approached this in the webinar, is this idea of matchmaking. You know, the idea that how does a sponsoring municipality like Brandon find an organization that's looking to be sponsored? And a lot of the questions in the webinar was, does it lie in the municipality or is it in fact the state that does this? And come to find out, it's the state that does the matchmaking because of the need to have the projects line up in time. And so I think part of what this would do, what I'm suggesting is that if we said yes to this, all it would be doing is saying that we're willing to have our, you know, our sponsorship available if in fact there's a project that lines up with our project. And if there's no project that lines up, then, you know, we don't end up doing anything because, you know, nothing actually happens. But if a project does line up, and for example, the one that I've read about online was that typically Burlington and Lake Champlain has a lot of watershed issues. And whenever they start to do a project, they start to look around for money like this that can match their money and get more federal money coming into Vermont. And so it seems like, you know, a low-risk, easy thing to do.
Yes, sorry, Tim, I thought that was Lee, I didn't catch who was speaking there.
That's okay.
The only thing that would probably could be, so this is, this project isn't quite typical. Generally, you know, you do an application at each phase of the project, you know, if you're using the state funding all the way through. What's unique about this project is you're really going to be using the USDA grant loan for the construction portion of it. So if this was to go down that path, you know, I think generally you would check the box when you're asking for the construction funds, Tim. So, you know, the state may not, and I don't know, that's, I guess, a question for clarification. So they may not choose to participate because this request is really for more of the engineering and related costs, you know, that the town's going to incur over the next year or so. It's not really an ask for construction funds. So possibly you need to be, you know, signing and submitting what we call a step three construction loan application to maybe tap into those funds at the time. But that's a question, you know, we'd be glad to get clarification from the state if it's something that the town wants to pursue further, Tim.
Great, and I see Butch might have some input there, too.
May I, Mr. Chair? Thank you. So for Select McDyles, depends which fund you're looking at. Are you looking at the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund or that type of funding? Because there is provision within that funding stream to allow municipal projects to sponsor other projects within the towns that you are in to do clean water, clean water projects within town. As an example, if you were doing a CSO project in Brandon and there was a local interest in doing a project for stormwater mitigation in a watershed, you could then apply for funds to do that stormwater mitigation in the watershed and have a private, it's a public-private partnership, have a private person pay the loan back, but then the town would sponsor that loan. But typically, it's my understanding that that project would have to be within your town. You would not typically sponsor a project in another municipality in that CWSRF program.
Yeah, it must be a different one because the Whisper program specifically says anywhere in the state of Vermont can be sponsoring.
And can you tell me what agency is doing that?
Yeah, it's the Water Infrastructure Sponsorship Program. Let me just flip over to a webpage and I'll get it for you.
Yeah, would you please send that down to me, Tim? I'd be interested in hearing.
Okay. If you didn't mind, so the Whisper is through the Clean Water SRF program.
Right, okay. Yeah, thank, thank you, Wayne. So I thought it was there, but unless you know the acronym sometimes, it's easier than yes. We live in a world of acronyms, so. But typically, the way it was designed originally for the Select Board, it was to do a project within your community and have you be the sponsoring community and responsible for the payback of that loan to a private person. Similar to many water projects that you do, the whole town's responsible for paying it back on a DWSRF. But I'd love to have you give me some more information so I could speak to you more intelligently about that, Tim.
Yeah, I'll gather some up and send it your way.
Thank you.
It's to the Department of Environmental Conservation.
Yeah, I was kind of involved in setting up that program and that's why I have interest in it.
So, Tim, thank you for that. So at this point, with what we just learned from Wayne and explored with Butch, is there something for us to do at this time, do you think?
Dave, when does this application do that you have in our packet?
As soon as you guys sign it, I'm sending it in.
Is there a deadline on it?
As soon as we get it in.
Well, I mean, I guess if, it would be interesting to find out if in fact now's the time to check the box by, you know, following up with the people who run the program and what Wayne might learn. And so if we could wait another two weeks till our next Select Board meeting, then that would allow us to gather that up. But I certainly don't want to hold something up if in fact there's a deadline we're trying to meet.
I would like to not hold the process up, but that's my opinion. I mean, we're already on, you know, this is step two, so for final design, I'd really hate to hold this up, project up, but it's up to the Select Board.
Any thoughts on this, any public input? Where is the box to be checked?
It's on page three of 13 in the application. It's about a third of the way down the page. An applicant interested in sponsoring a Whisper project, yes or no? And it's unchecked at this point.
So in reality, it's not asking for us to designate one or two?
No, in fact, the program specifically says that you don't designate the project. All you do is agree to be a sponsor and you go onto a list that is then accessed if somebody needs it.
So it's a yes or no for this? Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? Other input? Public input?
I mean, I'd like to see us check this box. I'd like to see us participate in this program to bring extra federal money to water, natural resource projects.
Does anybody know the cost if we were to sponsor?
It's zero.
Zero, then why, I mean, I guess my opinion, why not just check yes? If it's not going to cost us anything to do it, why not check yes and let's approve this application?
So I would say that's probably a motion from Mr. Giles and a second from Mr. Markowski, right? So, yeah, I think that that's the same way I would be thinking about this. I don't think it'll hold up the project. I think we could check yes tonight. It doesn't seem like it entails anything beyond checking yes tonight unless someone else thinks that that's not in fact the case. All right. Why don't we have any further discussion on that idea, on that motion to check the yes box regarding participating or sponsoring in the Water Infrastructure Sponsorship Program as it's been explained? Ready to vote? All in favor of checking the box to say yes that we're interested in sponsoring, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Tracy, I didn't hear you, is your microphone on? You're okay? Yes? Okay, so that was unanimous, great.
Mr. Chair, would you want to hold that motion until we get down to the line number five that says approved Clean Water Loan Application?
I was thinking that, I saw that down there later on the agenda, and I think maybe we've just kind of amended this and now if we can have a clean vote on number five because it will already have been edited? If that's cool? All right. Other board related, or other board comments or questions for the Town Manager? We're still there. In an unprecedented development, I have two questions by proxy from Select McDulage from the Town, for the Town Manager. So Dave, Brian asks, is Casella going to be reseating some of the grass areas near some of the curbs where it's necessary?
Yes.
And he's asking, is there a timeframe for the work on Park Street regarding the two things that were identified at the end of last season, which were a manhole cover low just east of the Lilac Inn and the intersection of Marble Street? I guess there was difficulty.
So we're actually, a couple of things going on with the intersection there. We're going to rebuild a manhole structure too on the southeast side of the intersection and repave that. So waiting for the asphalt plants to open up and we'll be looking at it then, getting it done.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the public, from the public for the Town Manager? Doug Bailey?
Yeah, timely. I'd like to piggyback on Brian's question on the seeding. I was in Center Street Park, the grass quality in there is really poor. Is that anything that's being looked at reseeding or adding some seeding or fertilizer to try to improve by the contractor?
Well, we're going to see, they're going to see what can be reseeded, but you've got to remember too, last year there was farmers market in there and events on the park that have trampled things down too. So, you know, how cannibal do we want to hold the company for other people walking over the grass? So, you know, at this point, we'll have to be putting some seed on too, so.
Yeah, maybe some seeds, some fertilizer. I mean, everything looks nice and that looks kind of beat up, so thank you, that's all I have.
We've got to remember too, it's still April, so we're still kind of ahead of the game here this year with Mullen, so we'll be out there cleaning it up.
I had a question, Bernie?
Bernie Carr, yeah, great.
Dave, do you have any update on Midway and Duncan? You're muted.
Dave, we don't hear you.
I see that. That would be a question for Midway and Duncan, Bernie. I don't really want to speak for them.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the Town Manager from the public in attendance tonight? Okay, we'll go along to public comment and participation generally. Is there anybody on the board with anything they wanted to bring up that doesn't appear on the agenda later? Tim Giles?
Yeah, I noticed that you sent us a letter today asking us for a letter affirming the transfer of some land to the state, some swamp land. And I'm wondering if this would be the place where we should talk about that or whether it's going to come up somewhere else?
I don't have any plans for it anywhere else, so this is fine, yeah.
Okay.
I did get the letter, so there was a letter addressed to the Select Board. It came in US Mail and I went down to the Town Office to open the envelope and gave it to Dave and asked for some, how he would advise the board kind of thing. And he has scanned it in and we sent it out to everybody on the board today. So, Dave, were you able to make some connection today regarding this, like to get a little bit more information from the person?
Well, and actually, before, before Dave, could I say one more thing?
Sure.
Just for the sake of the public, these are five parcels that people own in Brandon. These are Brandon people and they're wanting to donate their land to the Nature Conservancy or to Department of Fish and Wildlife. And the Department of Fish and Wildlife is asking for a letter of support from the Select Board, basically saying that, you know, that they won't oppose the transfer. And so that's what we're talking about. And now go ahead, thanks, Dave.
So Seth, I did actually forward an email to you at quarter of two this afternoon. I got, I actually had a chat with Joan Allen, who's the consulting person on this with the Fish and Wildlife. And I can read it if you want, it's not very long. So I had asked if there was any sort of policy or practices that Select Boards, you know, they look for some requirement from Select Boards to support these projects. So this is what, this is what it says. Hello, Dave, here's an explanation from Department of Fish and Wildlife about the support letter. Requesting a letter has been the department's practice for quite a while, going back several governors. There is no statute requiring us to get Select Board approval, but it is tradition and comes from the governor's office, not A and R. The governor just wants to see that townspeople or their representatives are not opposed to the project. A letter from the Select Board is preferred with either affirmative language or saying they don't oppose it, or I have simply used the official minutes from the meeting indicating they discussed it and were supportive or not opposed.
Thank you for that, thank you for finding out more information about that, Dave. I did actually get that email from you and I sent it to the rest of the board when I got it. So it was mostly just for the record to have that. So what's the pleasure of the board regarding this request?
I guess I make a motion that we write a short letter that says that we don't oppose the transfer.
You don't really need to write a letter, we can just use the minutes of the meeting if you want.
Well, that's true, but that was my motion.
Would you, would you consider amending the motion to take a favorable vote so it's reflected in the minutes of the meeting?
Would you like to amend the motion, Seth?
Well, there's no second to the motion yet, so right now, I'm asking you as the mover of the motion.
Sure, I'm willing to have, you know, whatever friendly amendment wants to happen to help us go through.
Yeah, so would there be a second to a motion that says we're going to take a vote tonight, which will indicate that we are supportive and or not opposed to the land transfers that are outlined in the letter?
I'll second the motion.
Michael seconded, thank you. Is there discussion about the motion? I think it's been very helpful to have this additional guidance and again, thanks for that, Dave, for talking to Joan. Any public input on the matter? Again, these are transfers really that are not going to involve the town, they're just looking to see that the Town Board supports it. So if there's nothing else to be said, are we ready to vote? All in favor of going on the record as saying that the Brandon Select Board does not oppose and in fact supports the proposed transfer of lots referenced in the letter from Joan Allen dated April 16th. Is that fair, Tim?
Yeah, thank you.
Charlene, did you catch what I was making up as I went along? Yeah, thank you. Okay, ready to vote on that? All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
And that was unanimous, thank you. All right. Further public comment and participation from the board? Anybody else on the board with anything? And if not, members of the public? Brent Buehler has a hand up.
Yeah, good evening. Given the decision last week to maintain the state noise ordinance as the rule, could you all publish the state noise ordinance or give a website for it? Because when I type in noise ordinance, Vermont noise ordinance, I get a ton of different ordinances. So it would be nice to know we're all on the same page. And that might be a chief wrickle request, I'm not sure.
Sure, so, you know, I think in terms of maybe why it was hard to find, I don't believe it would be, you know, considered an ordinance, it would be the state statute is what we were talking about, making, making Brandon make reference to, so.
And I have that if you'd like me to give it to him, Seth.
Yeah, right, yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah, it's state statute, Title 13, Chapter 19, Subchapter 004, Paragraph 1026, and its disorderly conduct, item number two, makes unreasonable noise.
I wonder, we do have the chief on the Zoom tonight, thank you for being here, Chief. Chief Rikel, you had provided, you know, a little bit of background in terms of the statute. Would it be reasonable to have those pages maybe taken out and appended to the minutes of this meeting or something like that?
I think that would be entirely reasonable because it would take the entire statute in its complete context and that would be appropriate.
Great, thank you. So I know I have one of those that you were so helpful to provide to us. Dave, you probably have one. Would you be able to, I don't know that Charlene got one of those. So could we fish out the pages that, you know, have the statute and maybe append them to the minutes of this meeting? Great. Brent, does that sound okay?
That'd be perfect.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Also, as a follow-up, I believe at the same meeting, Ms. Brier asked that that survey for High Pond Road be put in the public record. And is there a public record? I guess is my other question. What, is there a public record of the letters and the discussion for the noise ordinance?
So there were minutes of the hearings, that's a good question, there were minutes of the hearings, but I don't know that the letters got attached to either of them because the letters came in really outside of those hearings. But we did reference them in the previous Select Board meetings. So, right, we can append, I think Dave made a single kind of clearinghouse document of all of the letters that came in by email and so forth? Or Tim did? No, Dave got it to us and Tim collated it, right? Is how it went. So we have that. And then we also do have the survey that was submitted to the board of the High Pond Road neighborhood. So, yeah, why don't we, if we can, can we make it happen that those two documents also get appended to the minutes of this meeting? I guess I'm looking around the board, does that sound okay? And I'm looking at Dave, can, is that something that you can do in the office?
So if Tim's got that whole thing on whatever format he has it on, it's probably going to be easier for everyone to read it, so.
The PDF? I thought you had it, I'm sorry.
I just have files of all the letters, I don't have Word and all that and everything.
Tim, can you get Dave the collated version?
Yes, I'll send it out right now.
The version and then, well, Dave, do you have a digital version of the High Pond Road survey? Put that on our way, or can we, can you make a digital version?
Yeah, I've got, I've got just what was scanned into the, yeah, I can send it. I thought I sent it out to someone last week at the last meeting, but yeah, we'll just add it in, it's fine.
I think the board got it by paper. Charlene?
I think I may have it. Let me.
You may also have it. Well, anyway.
I thought I sent some docs to Elaine with the minutes, but I may not have. I thought I attached them, but I'll look into my files.
Well, what we can do is, either way, between now and the next meeting, we can get those documents together and we can decide whether to append them to the previous meeting minutes that we have approved or to append them to the minutes of this meeting, which we'll approve at the next meeting. Great, thank you. Anything else, Brent?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Other public comment, participation tonight? Doug Bailey?
It's fun not being a selectman anymore. I can say what I want. I was wanting to question, I know that while we were under Segment 6, we had put a waiver on our sign ordinance and allowed different sign ordinances along Route 7 to be going on now that Segment 6 is done. I'm wondering if the Select Board would terminate that and get back to the normal policy. I'm somewhat offended when I see businesses that are right there in downtown that are putting sign boards in our Center Street Park and sticking the ground signs on Center Street Park when you can see their business right from there. And I don't think that's what we should have in our park. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. I don't think we did officially end Segment 6 yet. Isn't there still stuff going on into May, Dave? Or not?
Segment 6 is not closed out yet.
Yeah, I think that it will be soon. And I think that that was the board's date for making that happen. At least that's my view. Other comments?
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I'm fine with that as long as we ended it at that time and, you know, get back to what our ordinance says and not have our nice park filled up with tacky signs.
Yeah, I believe the board's intent was to end the suspension of the sign ordinance at that time. Yep. Further public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead along to the next item. There's always time for public comment on each agenda item. So now we do have number five, which is to approve the Clean Water Loan Application. This is the large document that says state revolving loan programs at the top about the wastewater treatment plant. And we did amend the printed version of it by checking off the box yes on Page 3 regarding the Water Infrastructure Sponsorship Program through a vote earlier in the meeting. So what's the pleasure of the board on the actual funding application as we've amended it?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the Clean Water Loan Application.
I'll second that.
All right, motion from Tim and a second from Mike. Is there any discussion on this? Wayne, did you have any comment for us before we?
Yeah, I did, if you wouldn't mind. So there's a couple of reasons why we're doing this. You know, the majority of the project is going to be funded through the USDA grant loan. But the town isn't really able to start tapping into that until about a year from now when we get to bid phase in construction. So a couple of reasons of why we're doing this is called the Step 2 Final Design Clean Water Planning Loan Application. So the town qualifies for 50% subsidy as part of the engineering for this. And the other part of this is what's going to happen moving forward is once this planning loan's approved, is it gives the town a way to be reimbursed for the engineering costs and legal costs and permit fees and all those things, you know, moving into next February and March. So this is kind of a little bit like a bridge loan. But again, it's important because the town qualifies for the 50% subsidy. The amount is $300,000. That was all in the total project costs and the budget that was approved as part of the bond authorization. In addition to the engineering, we also include the, an allowance for the asbestos-led paint inspection, permit fees and legal. And again, the reason for that is the town can qualify for the 50% subsidy on some of those other costs beyond the engineering. The way the process works is we put the engineering together. And this is really to get the town over the next, you know, 10, 11 months. So you've got contract documents, all permits in hands and everything ready to go to bid, you know, early next year. The engineering agreement is reviewed and approved by the state and also USDA. That was completed a couple of weeks ago. You know, and again, this is really primarily for the contract document preparation and the permits moving forward.
Thank you very much, Wayne. And Dave, did you have anything you wanted to set us up with before we?
No.
Take the action?
No. Wayne nailed it.
Okay. Well, thank you both for all the work that you do. And I know that there's a number of other people listed in this who have involvement in it, including Sukage and Luanne and Jackie, and there may be others. But I always appreciate it when we get these things and you can read through the dozen pages or whatever and it all makes sense. You know, it seemed like all the questions were answered in a really forthright manner and it's understandable what's going on. So appreciate all of that work beforehand. Sure, Tim?
Yeah, before we vote, which I'm looking forward to approving, I noticed on Page 2, where it says total amount requested for this loan, it's blank. And I was just wondering if that's something that was intentional or whether it's an oversight or whether it's something that should have a number in it? I mean, because you just gave us a number that I heard you say, Wayne. And is that the number that goes in that box?
Yes, it is. Dave, I sent an update of that over Friday afternoon with the number plugged in. And the only reason we don't fill that in early on, Tim, is we wait till we get the state to approve the engineering services agreement.
Only makes sense.
But now Dave and I were going back and forth on Friday afternoon and I sent that back over with the number filled in. So the amount requested is $300,000.
Great, so that way we can be sure we're voting in the one that we're going to sign.
I'll take a look through my emails, Wayne. I was not around much Friday afternoon, so.
No, it's okay. Remember, I know we talked and I took a look at it and I kicked it back over, Dave.
On Page 2?
2 of 13, yep. Right under the section that says loan.
Yeah, I'm starting right out. Yeah, let me see if I can find the other one.
Yeah, so for those who don't know, the board packet gets done up on Friday mornings. And this, we may have received something that was, you know, the Friday morning version in the board packet and that might be what's posted online. But it sounds like that there was an edit made which included the actual loan amount. So is the board comfortable with going ahead and voting to approve? And then we understand that we will be looking on tomorrow morning when we go to sign these things, we'll be looking at one that has $300,000 in that box on Page 2?
Yes.
All right, any other discussion then? If not ready to vote, all in favor of approval of the funding application as it was presented, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous. Thank you. How about a grant resolution for the library? Dave, is this this one-page thing?
Yep, this is for the ACCD grant that the library is getting. We've done a couple of these resolutions before. It's kind of similar to what we just did with the SRF here that throughout a few processes, the board needs to resolve that they're still supporting the project, so.
So this just gets kind of attached to something that says Brandon Library on it because I didn't see anything on this.
Well, it's not really, it's not really our grant, you know. We're the kind of pass-through for this, but they had to apply through us because of us being the municipality, so.
Any other comment? Any discussion? Any questions? From the board or the public? Okay, if not, this is, Dave, is this for the structural renovations, like the, yeah, okay.
Do we need a motion?
It sounds like we would, yes.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve this grant resolution.
Motion from Tim and a second from Tracy. Any further discussion? This is, again, it's a project that we have already had before us. Same project, not a different project. All in favor of approving this grant agreement resolution as it was presented, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous. How about Item 7, Consider reinstating interest and penalty on sewer and taxes?
So I was asked by a board member to keep this on for this next meeting, so.
Okay.
That's why it's there.
Does that board member want to talk about it?
I'm just going to make a motion that we reinstate it.
At this time?
Yeah.
I'll second your motion.
Is there a discussion?
I guess.
I have a discussion.
Go ahead, Seth.
Yeah, my discussion was just that, you know, we talked about at the last meeting that we had voted to, you know, suspend it for the duration of the state of emergency. And I think that predictability is important to people and that there may have been people who made prioritizations based on that. And if not, I think that we are coming to the end of the state of emergency and I'm not sure that we need to change course this close to being done. That's my personal view.
I mean, it wouldn't be reinstated till probably in July anyways, correct, Dave?
Well, the last brochure we saw that they were hoping to open the state up on the 4th of July. So I don't know if that's still realistic or not.
I hate to put Butch on the spot, but I know that he's right in there in the thick of it. Butch, I feel like I've heard the governor say in some of his, you know, conferences that you can hear on radio and so forth, that that was in fact the kind of official plan was that the state of emergency was going to eventually come to an end and it'll have its extensions maybe through that point. Is that about right or not?
I hate to comment on what the governor's going to do because I never know really what the governor is going to do. But the state of emergency and opening the state back up are two different things. The state of emergency, and I think I've said this before, maybe not at this board meeting, but at maybe another board meeting, that the reason we have a state of emergency is for several reasons, but much of the legislation that we passed regarding COVID is based on the end of, well, the legislation will run till the end of the state of emergency, just as your resolution here in town is the same way. So the governor could extend and may need to extend that state of emergency for another 30 days on July 15th, or whatever date the current one runs out. Right now, just for your own information, the Senate has asked the House to extend our state of emergency in the legislature until January 1. So there's certain things that can happen during that state of emergency. So I can't predict when the governor's going to lift the state of emergency, but a lot of it would predicated on the conditions of some of the legislation that was passed. And that's all the information that I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you, Representative Shaw. So could I ask, what's the, what was the reason to bring this up again after having talked about it last time?
I think last time we said, we were kind of discussing that if we don't do something now, I mean, we're going to lose our leverage to be able to do it later. And I think a lot of the reason we're still in a state of emergency and anyone to be in a state of emergency, I think it creates a lot easier funding from the federal government coming into the state. And it's got really nothing to do with opening the state back up fully. I mean, Butch said it himself, that opening the state back up, staying in the state of emergency are both two different things. I think if we don't do something now, we're just going to lose our leverage to be able to do it, say, if we're still in a state of emergency by January 1st.
And, you know, my thought is that we've gotten all these stimulus checks and everything. It's just, I think we need to get it opened and, or I think we need to start it back in and get something started with it. Like Mike said, just for the, we're going to lose our leverage. And Dave had been pretty consistent with it. I just think we need to get it back on the, back in works.
Dave, as, oh, go ahead, Butch. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I may have confused the board a little bit with my statement about the Senate extending, wanting to extend a legislative state of emergency till January 1. There, in a quirk of law, the governor cannot require the legislature to be in a state of emergency. But the governor can require the state of Vermont to be in a state of emergency. So the legislature has to set their own state of emergency. So it gets a little squirrely that way because of the different branches of government. And same with the judiciary. They have to declare their own. So you shouldn't, I wouldn't suspect that you would want to tie your state of emergency guidelines into what the legislature does. I think you should stay locked into what the governor's doing. And that would, then, that sets up a whole chain of events. So, but as far as when it's going to happen, I have no idea.
It's an important clarification. Thank you for that. Dave, I was going to ask you as the delinquent tax collector, is there a rising tide of delinquencies? Like, are you concerned?
I wouldn't say there's a, like, population-wise, it's going up, but there are consistencies from year to year that, you know, we usually have methods of dealing with that we really don't now. And all it's doing is making that number bigger for them, which means when we are opened up for doing tax sales again, I think there's going to be some folks that are going to have a lot to pay. So it's, you know, the list is pretty consistent from year to year, but we're not seeing anything get chipped away at it. And, I mean, as you know, we've had two rounds of the state, you know, paying off some utility bills for folks. And I don't think that it's been taken advantage of very, very much. So I don't know. I think some folks are going to be in for a shock next year when they haven't paid their taxes for two years.
True enough. Any public comment? Any further discussion? So the motion is to reinstate interest and penalty on sewer. Oh, Brent Buehler had a hand up. Sorry. Brent, do you want to go ahead?
Sorry, I know a few landlords that haven't received rent since they keep putting these moratoriums on. And yet, they're not receiving rents, but their taxes and their water and sewage are still accumulating. And so there is a burden on that. I think the town, though, would be able to identify rental properties pretty easily, given that they're supposed to be licensed. Is that correct?
So Brent, I actually attended one of those, one of those conferences on the water and sewer and utility arrearsages and made the suggestion that the towns reach out to the state entity to say, well, here's our list. And they didn't like that idea. They wanted every individual renter, whoever, to call and get the information and, you know, set up a, you know, yeah, a thing on the website and go that way. So we could have made it a little bit easier, but they weren't impressed with that. Actually, I was told that we shouldn't be in this for municipalities to make money. And I'm like, well, I'm just trying to make the process run smoother.
Right.
That was where it was left, so.
Well, I know just some of these landlords have been really hamstrung because they can't evict people and they're not getting paid. So it really creates a hardship on some of them. And I just want to say, if, you know, I kind of agree with Seth that if you're going to leave towns, you know, business signs up because Route 7 hasn't closed out, then you really ought to stick with your original premise of honoring it until the state of emergency or something evolves. Thank you.
Thanks for that perspective about landlords, Brent. Doug Bailey had a hand up?
Yeah, certainly as a 30-year banker, I can support what Dave and Tracy are trying to say that the further behind someone gets, the harder it is to work something out. And part of the collection is getting payment plans in place. And clearly, any landlord that's not able to collect their rent can be meeting with Dave and setting up payment plans or, you know, plans. I think there's a small number of the ones that are delinquent are probably landlords compared to others. compared to others and and sometimes if you let someone get too far behind, there is absolutely no way they will ever catch up. And that will actually lead to more tax sales, so. I, I think it's, it's time to, to start being able to open the collection activity.
Doug, for, you know, Tracy.
Seth, I mean, I, I don't have a, I don't have a, a pen, a problem uh, still uh, leaving the interest in penalty, but we gotta do something to get these taxes so that these people are being paid and I, I think that's the route we gotta do is to, like, you know, we've been saying that they're just we're gonna have, we're gonna have people that they're gonna have an awful shock here the next year or so.
Well, just to be clear, we're talking about just the interest in penalties that we'd be voting on, right? I mean, um people are still supposed to be paying their taxes.
The taxes are still due. Yeah, Dave had something to say.
So, I think that the difficult thing here is that we're gonna spring a tax sale on people, but we haven't been collecting interest, interest and penalty for over a year. Um, that's, it seems a little odd. Um, but, no, we did send delinquent letters out or delinquent bills out here, I don't know, right after town meeting. Um, we've seen a little, seen a little bit come in, but we're not seeing the folks coming in that we know need some help with maybe a payment plan or whatever because there's no incentive right now. They're not accumulating. You know, I mean, once the interest and penalty starts going, it can add up quick. Um, so. Yeah, I, that's the problem. Um. And, you know, there's a lot of people that don't like to pay their taxes and we see them every year about this time of the year, so.
Further discussion, Tim?
Yeah, I, I, I guess I'm just wondering if um the threat of a tax sale isn't as um uh coercive as the uh interest and penalties. It seems like both of those are basically raising the importance to these people to come in, develop a payment plan, you know, get ahead. And the only difference is that the um interest and penalties is, is it doesn't go away. It's like, once they start adding those up, those keep adding on. And I, I think the idea during the pandemic was to not have interest in penalties.
Further discussion, public comment, other quick, Dave?
I'll do the tax sales, you know, we'll do them at the end of the fiscal year here if you want, if you want. I think folks are gonna be shocked if it's been, you know, waived interest and penalty um, for as long as it has been. Now we're gonna spring a tax sale.
Uh, what, what has been the deal with tax sales? I mean, it's nothing, you decide what to do or do you ask the board to decide when to do one? I know we have an.
We have an echo going here, so can.
Doug needs to mute his.
Um. We, we've been doing them every year since, since I became delinquent tax collector and that's what's cleaned a lot of this up. But, you know, there's sort of that imposing threat of when after, now after May fifteenth, after our last quarterly payment, we send that, that delinquent notice out first and then fifteen days or thirty days later, we send you know, the, you, property might be up for tax sale letter, which really brings in a good amount of cash. I mean, you see, you've, I think you guys have seen the last few years, our tax sale properties of, you know, we're, we have one or two and now that they've been like vacant land and stuff. So it, it's really an effective process to collect tax dollars.
And you, you're still sending the delinquent letter, as you said, or not?
Well, we, we decided to send it after town meeting.
Yep.
Um, so we sent them out in March. I mean, we've seen some stuff come in, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't wanna see us going to like having you know, seven hundred thousand dollars in delinquencies again when you know, we've been very successful doing this annually and, you know, keeping that number way down. So.
I, uh, yeah, I, I don't, I, these are two, two kind of separate issues, but closely related, you know, whether we have interest in penalties and whether we have the tax sale or when we have the tax sale, yeah.
Yeah.
Other comment? So uh, if not, if we're ready to vote, the motion, I think, is to reinstitute interest and penalties on sewer and taxes, um, basically as of the vote. Uh, if we're ready to vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 As Mr. Wyman and Mr. Markowski say aye, opposed?
Aye.
Giles and Hopkins opposed, so a tie vote fails. So, um, Dave will keep us posted, I'm sure, as to delinquencies and or when he anticipates wanting to do a tax sale. How about item eight, consider posting a notice to bid on town lots number six dash one dash twenty-three and six dash one dash thirty-two?
Moving to have it posted.
Motion from Tracy, is there a second? I'll second. Is there any discussion on these? Uh, Dave, can you just identify these?
Sir, these are the two lots that were posted last fall that the nature conservancy was going to acquire and then they backed out of it because they didn't like our deed language apparently.
So these are swamp lots?
So these are the swamp lots, same too.
Tim?
Yeah, um, I, it, it looks like there might be a small typo. Um, in, in the middle of the document, it says the Brandon Select Board has set a minimum bid of one hundred dollars and then it has in parentheses two hundred and fifty dollars per parcel. And so I'm wondering whether we mean a hundred or whether we mean two fifty. It's, it's, it's no biggie.
So it's not really a typo. I put the number two fifty in there. I was hoping to have some discussion on that this evening. Um. So I guess I can have that discussion now. Um. I think we should raise the minimum bid to two fifty. Um, and I was hoping for, to see some, the board maybe um go along with that.
I'm, I'm, I'll amend my motion to the that we put it a minimum bid of two fifty.
Um, so the motion's got an amendment. I'll second the amendment since I seconded the motion. Is there discussion on uh amending this to be a minimum bid of two hundred and fifty dollars per parcel?
Yeah, since you were looking for discussion, I, I'm interested in, in why it was a hundred dollars and now it should be two fifty.
Um, you guys had it at a hundred dollars when we first talked about it and if we're gonna do it this way, I think we might as well make a little more money on it. But it's up to you guys.
So it, so you're, you're saying it's in the best interest of the town to maximize the town's yield from these parcels when we, when we sell them?
Sure.
Great. Other discussion? I think that's reasonable. All in favor of the amendment to change the number uh to two hundred and fifty dollars per parcel, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous. So then on to the main uh motion, which was to approve the invitation to bid. Has it's now been amended. Is there discussion on that? These are, these are two swamp lots, which the town will set a minimum bid price of two hundred and fifty dollars on. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of posting these uh for inviting folks to bid on them, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Excellent. How about the warrant? Uh, there's a three-page warrant. What's pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve uh the warrant of a a hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred dollars and forty-seven cents.
I'll second it.
Motion from Tracy and a second from Mike. Is there any discussion or any questions on any of the bills?
I, I guess, you know, this is a, a friendly comment because I know that Tracy, for a while, when we were doing segment six projects, he would um recuse himself because you know, he might have some business that was on, on this. And I wasn't sure if Mike um would comment about whether or not Markowski excavation is in fact his family and whether um just for kind of, you know, clarity, whether it helps to have him recuse on this particular thing. Um. It, it's meant to just try to be transparent and um, I, maybe Mike wasn't around when, when Tracy recused on things like this.
I, I have no problem recusing myself, but um, I'll be right up front with you. I'm just a regular employee at Markowski's cake spate and it does the dirt work. You know, I have no, no, no uh involvement in the office. I got no financial investment in it. Also, I'll, I'll be happy to recuse myself whenever my name comes up onto the warrants. That's no problem to me.
Okay, so um if that's the case, uh the motion was from Tracy, right?
Right.
Right? So we'll need a second then if, if Mike's gonna recuse.
I, I second and, and just to be clear, Mike, I, I just, I wanna make sure it's not a I, I, I don't think there's any um foul play going on. Um, I, I just remember sitting beside Tracy and watching him recuse and, and I just wasn't sure if you were aware of that.
I, I recuse because I had, I had previously on the, on that had spoke with Markowski or with uh Casellas and made possible arrangements. And that was the reason I recused. I don't the only time I could think it, that Mike should have to recuse was if there was a, something in the warrant that was made out to Markowski's.
And so is Markowski's different than Markowski excavating? Is that his family?
Markowski excavating, same.
Yeah, it, it's, it's my family. And I mean, the only thing that was on the warrants this time was some gravel. It looks like some um and this road gravel, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it's a small amount, I mean.
Right, I mean. Eighty dollars, you're talking, you're talking maybe a truckload, so.
You know, if, if, if his name's on, if Markowski's excavating's on there, then that's probably what he should do.
Dave?
So with that said, you're probably gonna see Markowski's name on more invoices or more warrants than not because we do buy gravel from them. We do use the their, their dump area for, you know, trees and, and stone and stuff quite often. Um. It's not a requirement that Michael has to recuse himself on this if you read the statute, so. Um. You know, that's totally up to him. But, I mean, we're gonna see Markowski's a lot. We do a lot of business with them, so. Um, ha- always have, probably always will.
So, um, that's true. Um, Mike doesn't have to recuse. Um, he's offered to in this case and, and we'll have, you know, three votes to make something happen, so nothing is gonna get held up. I will say that there's, you know, there are other options you're gonna see in the liquor meetings. I've, I used to recuse and now I just disclose. And um those, that's another way to handle it. You can disclose that there's a relationship and you can, and then you ask the board and the public if anybody objects to participating in the discussion or action. So, uh, we do have a motion. We do have a second. Is there more discussion? Any questions on the bills? All in favor of the warrant as it was presented, say aye.
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 Uh, so that was Hopkins, Giles and Tracy in favor. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mike's recused. Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, there's an executive session here, but we do have the liquor meeting, so at eight oh four, we're gonna have the, call the select board to recess and call the Board of Liquor Control Commissioners to order. Is there a motion on the agenda?
Almost.
Second. Tracy moves and Tim seconds. We do have some additions to make, right? So I'm gonna try and be very careful with this because um there were a couple of different things, so. One of them is this, uh, the town clerk has requested that we add a third class license and outside consumption permit for M and B hospitality. And she has attached in the email that she provided to the board, their first class permit and a letter explaining why this is happening. So that's one modification would be to add um where would we put this? I guess, like three B or something. Three B would be the M and B hospitality, third class license and outside consumption permit. And then she had an additional one. For an outside consumption permit. It's a renewal permit for Neshabie River Winery. So I would suggest that that would be three C and outside consumption permit for Neshabie River Winery. Dave, as I'm looking at this, I don't think it's uh the actual license renewal. It's just the outside consumption part of it. Is that right?
Yeah, it says, so it's for, yeah, outside grounds between the horse barn, the vineyard and fence um up on their their, their inn by the golf course.
Okay.
Says, I can read, I can read the rest of it. Just wanna know it real quick. Um, on golf course side of property and on deck outside of wine tasting room, uh, ten AM to ten PM, hundred and twenty-two feet by fifty-two foot area to include chicken coop and patio area outside inn and back of red barn.
So that's the one for the, for the Neshabie River Winery and then there's another one for the Brandon Inn and that's similarly described as the rear patio and pool area of the Brandon Inn excess through the back door garden room fenced area and within the driveway. Okay. Did we cover it, Dave?
Yes.
All right, so that would be three B for the Brandon Inn and three C for Neshabie River Winery. Uh, is there any discussion further on the agenda? All in favor of adopting the agenda as we just amended it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Um. At this time, I will disclose a business relationship with the Brandon Inn and with the owners of Neshabie River Winery for the minutes. Is there any objection to taking item two, which is the minutes of April twelfth and all of item three, which would be the Red Clover Outdoor Beer Garden that was held this weekend, that the town clerk issued the permit for and we're being advised. And three B, the Brandon Inn third class and outside consumption and three C, the outside assumption, Neshabie River Winery. Any objection to taking all of those as a consent agenda?
None.
None heard. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That was unanimous. Item four, who's gonna do it?
I make a motion to adjourn.
No, no.
Charlie, what?
Who made the motion for the consent agenda? I, I just heard the original agenda.
Seth made the motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And who seconded?
I did.
Tracy, okay. And then Tim Giles has, in a rare move, has just moved to adjourn. Is there a second on that?
Sorry.
Not debatable. All in favor of adjourning at uh eight oh eight, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're adjourned. Nice work. Most folks have gone, but this is usually, uh, we'll call the select board back to order at eight oh eight. This is generally where we have announcements and other suggestions for the good of the community. Anybody got anything else they wanna share? Don't hear anything, so if not, I wanna thank you all for being here tonight. Thanks to um Charlene as always for, sorry about the extra work with the changes, but that's great. Butch, thank you for coming always and giving us um the inside scoop on those kinds of things. And thanks to the member of the, members of the public who are here and the press, uh, Lee Cars is here, Brent's here, Bernie's here. And there's one telephone user, I don't know who that is, but thanks to that person for being interested in, in their select board. So at this time, is there a motion on the board to find the premature general public knowledge of the negotiation strategies with the New England Police Benevolent Association will clearly place the town at a substantial disadvantage?
Yeah.
Tracy moves, is there a second? I'll second. Can't really talk about contracts in public, guys. Um, any discussion on that finding? If not, all in favor of the finding, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Is that unanimous? Aye, that's unanimous. Is there another motion to enter the executive session to discuss the collective bargaining agreement with NE PBA under one VSA three thirteen A one?
Almost.
Tracy moves.
Second.
Tim seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of entering executive session at eight ten, say aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous.